It being seven o'clock, planning board meeting comes to order. First item on the agenda tonight is review of old and new business, planners report.
Thank you. So we have some breaking news for 29 Wall Street. A building permit was issued yesterday, so you'll start to see that project, which for the viewers at home, that's 25 single bedroom units and 25 two-bedroom units with some retail space right next to the post office. So the project has been on the books for about, what, three years maybe now? So delayed by COVID, so it'll be good to have some new residents uptown. We wanted to talk about the November planning board meetings. Our next planning board meeting is actually next week, and that's because November 11th is Veterans Day and November 25th is Thanksgiving. So we can't meet on our normal weeks. And then ZBA has the other week and they have a hearing. So the only day we could meet this month would be next Thursday. As of right now, though, I don't believe we have anything on the agenda.
So December looks good.
Yeah, the next meeting would be December 9th, so that's why we did put that in there just in case. So I know Gary mentioned maybe canceling the meeting.
You want to wait and make a judgment call early next week?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
They have to post on Monday.
You guys are pretty good. Like if there was ever an emergency, I assume we could scramble and try to find a way, but we've never really had to do that.
Why couldn't we hold it on a Wednesday if we had to or something?
Exactly, exactly. So for right now, I think unless something comes up tonight or, you know, throughout the week, we probably lean towards canceling next Thursday night's meeting. And which brings me to the next item because I'm kind of glad because I actually have three meetings at the same time next Thursday night. In addition to our housing coalition, which meets at 6:00 PM on Zoom, we have a MassDOT public hearing on Route 1 resurfacing. So that's all through the state. They hold a virtual public hearing. It's posted with the town clerk, and so if someone wants to go on the website and check it out. But basically, it's online. It's 7:00 PM on November 4th. And the description is, let's see, MassDOT plans to resurface 2.4 miles of Route 1 in the town of Foxborough. This pavement preservation project will also include safety, bicycle and pedestrian improvements where appropriate, including the intersections of Lincoln Road, Pine Street, and North Street. Related improvements include installing Hawk pedestrian beacon for a new crossing, reconstruct existing sidewalks and curb ramps that are not ADA compliant or in poor condition, construct new sidewalks and curb ramps where none exists such as in the Route 1, E Street, Main Street intersection area, provide new crosswalks where warranted, install pedestrian countdowns, and bicycle accommodations will consist of use of the 10-foot outside shoulder that exists along most of the corridor except at intersections. So we do have a set of plans in our office, and we have had, Diana's been answering questions even though she's been helping folks out with that. They have come in, so if anybody's interested.
Any major?
No, it's really just pavement preservation. But when they do a certain, nowadays at MassDOT, if you do X amount of work, you have to do pedestrian accessibility and bicycle, you know, AKA plane ridge, think of the bike lanes out at plane ridge.
I was just going to bring that up. I can't think of a more dangerous situation than that in my life.
I completely agree with you, Jeff.
The 495 ramps.
I know, I know. So we'll see what comes of this one. I mean, that's just non-negotiable. I'm sure everybody fought that one, and I mean, it's ridiculous, but.
And where's that liability?
Yeah. Well, luckily, the thing is just because you put it there doesn't mean people ride there. I mean, I've never seen a bike anywhere near there, so I don't, I think, again, it's one of those examples of a policy gone rogue. But stay tuned and, you know, feel free to provide comment. I know one gentleman has already written in, and I saw the responses, that they are responding to questions via email, so they are being responsive. They actually worked with us, you know, when we had our, this is sort of a standard project all of Route 1, but when they got to Foxborough last year, we pointed out, you know, we're like, we're a little different in our pedestrian. And so they actually took an extra year and really looked at the area. So it will be interesting to see how the hearing goes, but they did kind of, to the best they could, accommodate the unique condition of our area with pedestrians. Town meeting, special town meeting is November 15th, and I actually have a draft of a report to town meeting based on the hearings, and I didn't know if anybody had a chance to look at that and what you thought about the report.
Straightforward to me.
Okay, thank you. I will add in, we still have to do Article 3 tonight, so that, you know, we'll fill that in based on whatever we discuss tonight. But this, I did want, since we were so early, we were able to get this to you. A lot of times we do this after our hearings and you never see it, so see, it's a standardized thing. The other item that came up is the PowerPoint presentation that I'll be using right, once we get into the Article 3 continued hearing. I had asked Frank Spillane, the town moderator, if we could just provide that on the tables at town meeting, because it was kind of a good summary for folks sitting there in the audience at town meeting, and he agreed, but he asked that the board take a vote to ask, you know, to allow, to submit it to town meeting. So I sent that out, and I know you've all seen it, and I didn't know if you had any thoughts on that and if you wanted to take that vote so that we could send that over.
I think it's a great idea.
I think it's a good idea.
Make a motion to submit the.
PowerPoint present overview of the zoning articles for special town meeting on November 15th.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Oh, there he is. Frank, they just voted to submit the PowerPoint presentation to the town meeting.
And you appeared.
So, thank you for that. And so we'll get into Article 3 in a few minutes, but I think we have something else before that. Inspection engineer, as you know, Norm is retiring and is coming up quickly. We are working on finding replacement, but in the meantime, DPW will fill in, but we've been asking folks. Gary just suggested an idea of possibly looking if other communities wanted to share. That might be more of a longer-term thing just because of funding and whatnot, but that's actually, having been the planner in Rentham for 10 years, unless things have changed there, they desperately, we were always very jealous of Norm, because Tom Rinn, who's a building commissioner, building inspector here, was on my planning board in Rentham, and he would always say, oh, in Foxborough, we have a, we have Norm, a retired engineer, and I was always very jealous of Norm. So I will look into that, but in the meantime, we're scoping out what we could do to get through the shorter term.
And who would be making that hiring? Is that DPW?
No, I think it's planning. I think it's you guys. I mean, obviously, well, yeah, because it's a consultant, really. It's not, if it were ever a permanent position, and it would depend on where, what town they worked for, and we don't even want to get into hiring, but that could be something we did look at in the future. That would obviously be a hiring, that's different. What Norm is, is more of a consultant, so that would be, that would rest with you.
I did reach out to John Rhodes, I got no response.
Yeah. He's, I believe his grandfather's schedule is such that he would be, he wants to pass at this time. So he would be a great person. But I think he had, and we have a couple suggestions. And we are working with Chris and Lance for their ideas as well. We did meet with them, and, you know, that's how we know they're willing to support. They were almost even probably willing to take it on, but then when we start talking logistics of how Norm would sit out there and watch the pavement, you know, for hours, and our DPW guys can't sit there for hours, you know, they just have too many things going on, so we'll get to that. Here's another great bit of news. We, the management, last year or so, was able to consolidate positions, and just recently they hired a procurement specialist using like existing funds. Well, our offices benefited greatly because we have that Walnut Street RFP out there. They put that out, they're handing all the addenda, all the legalities, like, I'm not doing any of that right now, which is amazing, like just the other day, I was like, we got to get that out, and they're like, it's already out. And then this engineering services RFQ, that's our BSC, they do reviews for all our subdivision and site plans. Well, that's supposed to be renewed every like three years, and it hasn't been renewed in a while, so we told them we needed it, we gave them a sample, they whipped it up, we reviewed and approved it a few times back and forth, and it went out Monday, and we've done nothing. So this is wonderful, and it's being done legally, it's been done, being done in-house. We have a website now, which is like we're now legit, you know, it used to be me doing it, and it was so inefficient, and I didn't know what I was doing, so this is really great. So anyway, we do have an engineering RFQ out for review engineer, and that is due, I believe, December 1st. So folks go to the website under bids and they can qualify for that. Mass Gaming Commission, late last week, we filed our proposal with Mass Gaming to use the rest of our mitigation money, which is going to expire December 31st if we didn't use it. So between Rentham and Foxborough, we have about 33, almost $34,000, and that would buy us about a year of website content and marketing services, and also coming up with a strategy for try revenue generation through marketing and working with the partners. So November 4th is when the gaming commission votes on it, so we're hoping that that would get, because the website's almost done, and then if you look at my EDC website, you see that you don't want a planner running a website, so we actually would have a professional, who knows what they're doing, do this, and it would be really great for our region as, you know, as we all recover from COVID. And then lastly, Gabby and I spent today on a virtual conference, and we are, we'll be on it all day tomorrow, and it's actually been pretty cool. This was, it's New England APA, normally it would be in Providence today, but this time, I think they had trouble getting sessions, so it's only really one session per time slot, which normally you pick. And so we've been going to just everyone, and it's been kind of fascinating, because I wouldn't normally go listen to like affordable housing in Connecticut, but I was like, you know, maybe I should listen to that, or what, bio, what's the word, bio, no.
Please hold.
Uh, no, biodiversity?
No, biotherm, the thermodynamic, no, there's something. Anyway, we went to a really good thing about human behavior and vision and like what you see, and there's these special glasses that retailers wear that actually can predict what people will see and be attracted to from marketing, and it's all like using biology in design. Really cool, and like that's the level like artificial intelligence is getting at in like the design world. So it's pretty cool. Anyway, that's what we've been doing, and we'll be doing it again tomorrow, so.
Sounds like you're having full loads of fun.
Biometrics, biometrics. Thank you.
Yeah, do we have anything on active subdivisions?
No.
I would like to comment, East Belcher Road finally being paved. It's a pleasure.
Yes.
Being a little after 7:05, action items, London Estates, bond reduction request?
That has been taken off the agenda.
Okay. We have the minutes from October 14th.
I just sent them out this morning. I forgot it was a really long meeting, so if everybody get a chance.
Very well done.
Yes.
I read them, I'll make a recommendation, will you approve them?
I didn't read them, I haven't had email in two days.
Do you want to hold?
Yes, please.
Do you have power now? Do you have power yet?
I came on at about 4:30 this afternoon.
Gabby just got hers, too.
Yeah.
Tom, did you get yours?
12:30 this morning.
Good. Everybody else?
My house was back yesterday at 2:30 in the afternoon.
Oh.
My business wasn't.
Oh. So you gave the guys the whole, gave.
Two days. Yeah, oh, yeah. Yep. Okay, a little after 7:10 PM, informal discussion, minor modifications, Forbes Crossing.
We were here for the last meeting.
Yeah, I think so.
I was thinking, I don't know if you heard that.
Good job.
Thank you.
You killed some Adrian's.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Did we print these out? I didn't know we'd be bringing extras.
This is the locks.
Evening, Jerry Franks, playing here. This is a salting group, which is.
Pre-VE of pre-engineering. We were here at the last meeting reviewing the last building site at Forbes Crossing, and got some input from this board at that time. We're back with the changes to the expected site plan for that new building. There is one slight change from what we originally, what I sent to the plan director that was sent out, and I'm assuming the board got, that will go over with you, but everything else is the same. I'm just going to ask Eric now to go over it with you.
Good evening, for the record, Eric Preve, P-R-I-V-E. I'm a registered professional engineer with Dupree Engineering, offices at 990 Washington Street in Dedham, Massachusetts. So yeah, since the last meeting, since the last meeting, primary discussion was around the one-way around the bank, so, excellent, can I, will this thing reach? I'll just bring it as close as I can, so everybody, I'm sure there's a lot of people at home interested, so.
So, and I'll talk loud. So the, the primary discussion was around making sure that the turn into the drive-through, it was the angle concern of coming in from the bank side over here and a tight angle coming into the drive-through queue, having tough turning movement. So we focused primarily on that, turning this into a one-way area. So we took this and we're able to make an island here and turn this into just a one-way in this area, so this would actually be a raised island in this area, so you wouldn't be able to come here. There'd be two signs, so you'd have do not enter, do not enter, looking from this way here, so if I actually, if I did turn in here, I would know, I cannot come in here, I could always go to the next one and come around, come into the drive-through. And on this side, it'd be a double stop sign, too. Typically, you could just do one, but we're going to have a do not enter anywhere, anyway here, backing up the stop sign makes sense just to make sure people know to stop in that area, so you'd have two, so you'd have do not enter, do not enter, stop, stop, coming from that direction here, and that allows for coming around here. Additionally, we put a directional sign over here, so if you're coming from the main roundabout intersection here, for instance, you would come through here, and you would see this, there'd be a sign right here for anybody coming in here, and it would say drive-through straight, so people know to keep coming straight at this area. Then when they came up to this area, there'd be one in this island here, it says drive-through left for Tropical Smoothie, so as Tropical Cafe, excuse me, as I'm coming up here, I know to take the left to come into this area for the drive-through as well. So that would, should help route for kind of a wayfinding purpose of being able to route the traffic to coming to the drive-through. Just like anything, if somebody does take that turn, they'll know for the next time, don't take that turn, right? That's usually what ends up happening is, and again, like I said, you have an alternative over here to come around as well. Those are the primary changes, the one minor modification that we made from what was emailed to you previously, and what you're seeing up here is, it was an extension of a stripe line in this area, and in discussions with Tropical Cafe, we didn't feel it was necessary as far as the queuing lengths, I mean, there's, there's four spaces between the pickup and the actual order board, there's five behind the order board. They on average have, excuse me, on peak, peak hour have 14, so it's not, it wasn't necessary to strike that. Also knowing that this future tenant right here, undefined 3,500 square feet, we didn't want to have additional, additional striping that we didn't feel was necessary, it just kind of clutters up the ground a little bit, so we didn't feel it was necessary in that area as well. So we thought, you know, naturally, if it were actually two, people will tend to do it anyway, but we didn't want to necessarily put any additional striping on there, so.
That's fine. Makes sense.
And we also put this on here as well, just so it's nice and clear that that's the one-way on the ground as well. So hopefully, we hope that those improvements can, that the modifications to the plan are the improvements to make it a better functionality out there as well.
Satisfies all my concerns.
Thank you. I know it was the hard one last time we met, that looks great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't present at the last meeting, but I did have one question when I saw the plan the other day, and that was, this doesn't affect the parking counts, correct?
No. There's actually more, correct? There is, there's more parking than there is. It was originally approved with 400 parking spaces for the whole plaza.
Right, right.
Actually, out there today is 404, so more than there should have been by design anyway. Also, there was a 6,200-square-foot restaurant originally, so we did put the parking calc on the original one.
Okay.
Not on the overall.
But there's more.
I have it on the overall plan as well, but so it was a 6,200-square-foot, it would have been 46 parking, 47 parking spaces required. Now with being partial restaurant and partial retail, only 25 spaces would be required by parking, so it's actually, the requirement would be less, but we're not going to, we're not changing it.
Then I have no questions.
I'm good. I think it looks great. Thank you.
Looking forward to a great addition to town.
Too.
So the planning board didn't hear, we have to come back in, what type of site plan would you, it's not, it's just a minor modification? Consider it a minor modification?
Yeah, I agree.
Minor modification.
I would agree with that.
So the board needs to vote to make a finding that this is a minor modification and then vote to approve.
Okay.
Make a motion that it is a minor modification that's being made at Forbes Crossing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your time today.
Thank you very much. Very much looking forward to it.
The vote, vote to approve the minor modification?
It's a great synergy with the gym next door.
We need to take a vote to approve.
I make a motion to approve the minor modification at Forbes Crossing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Gabby.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Very much. Joy, thank you.
Okay, we're actually pretty much on schedule.
Now it's all up to Barney.
Being approximately 7:15 PM, continued public hearing, zoning articles, zoning bylaw, chapter 275.
Just to share with you what happened, when we, when they read it, Barney talked to Bill Buckley, and they realized that there was some more wording that needed to be changed.
Paige and I have spoken.
Okay, just want to make sure you know.
So can you, am I hearable? I've unmuted myself.
Can we turn Barney up? Yep, he's going to, he's going to turn you up.
Turn me up?
Talk now, Barney.
Okay, thank you. So just to sort of summarize, the intent of the building height article is to address the fact that many of the houses in Foxborough do not comply with the zoning bylaw, because basement is considered the first story of any home, and second, to simplify the zoning bylaw by eliminating all references to story and stories, so that the height of buildings are measured only in, in feet. So the article is originally drafted, really just missed one issue, and that was the fact that homes with walkout basements would still remain non-compliant. So I spoke with Bill Buckley about it, we came up with some wording, we modified it a little bit, ultimately spoke with, Bill and I spoke with Frank Spillane, and what you have received, the two sentences that I've added as an amendment is what we're proposing. And what we would do would be to amend the article by motion on the, on the floor of town meeting. And this would address the issue of homes with walkout basements. There might still be, you know, a handful of outliers that still do, you know, homes that still would be non-compliant, but we're pretty confident that most of the issues are taken care of with the article as drafted and the ammendatory language that's in front of you.
I read through this the other day, and I was very confident. Does anybody on the board have any questions or comments?
Just mechanically, so we have a printout of this, will that text be actually appearing? Is that the way it will appear?
The amendment is not in the warrant.
Okay.
So to make things run as smoothly as possible, the initial motion by the advisory committee won't have this additional text.
Okay.
And that'll be the initial discussion, and then either a planning board member or somebody else, Mr. Overett, will make a motion to amend by adding this language.
Are you recommending that this be a handout beforehand?
It's in the slideshow.
Well, didn't they just vote in?
Yeah, the power, in the PowerPoint that you just voted, that it's actually going to be in there.
Yep, and we could have it as an additional handout, too.
Just to reduce confusion.
Yeah, because reading all that, people are going to be confused.
Just to read verbally, so.
Yep.
Looks good to me.
So that's the language up there. For some reason, it's not coming up big, having some Zoom problems over here.
That looks good.
So we need a motion to approve that, recommend it?
To recommend it as amended.
Yes. Do we have a motion to recommend it?
As amended.
As amended?
Yes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Barney.
Thanks, Barney.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Wait. Wait, cotton picket. Here, no, we got to do a recommendation, a report to town on this article.
Oh, the reasons that we support it?
Really what I started off with would be the recommendation, you know, the intent to address the fact that many homes in Foxborough do not comply with the zoning bylaw, and to simplify the zoning bylaw by eliminating all references to story and stories when determining the height of a building.
Exactly.
Thank you.
So that's why the planning board recommends?
Yes.
That's why.
Mr. Overett explained it incredibly well.
Get the words right out of my mouth.
To bring, you know, it was never our intent to have all these homes.
Can you do a separate handout for recommendations of the planning board?
Yes.
Okay.
We do, they just, they voted that before you got here, and so yes, we have that ready to go except for this one, so we're just working on that. So that someone should make that motion.
We just did, didn't we?
We just did.
Okay, then you have to.
Second and vote.
You have to second and vote.
We did.
We did.
For the recommendation?
No, we didn't vote for that.
We didn't vote, but he seconded it.
Okay, sorry. I was just making sure that.
They voted to recommend this article to town meeting.
For the reasons that were.
And then she usually has you add the reasons.
For the reasons that Barney articulated.
Amend your motion to include this stuff. You can say that, you, Tracy.
Amend the motion to include the reasons for our recommendation.
Just, just making sure it's your words, not someone else's.
Okay.
Just making sure the motion is real.
He took the words right out of my mouth.
I don't know, that's what you were going to say, right, Gary?
Yeah.
Yeah, and Gary seconded it, and everybody.
We voted. Aye.
We did vote. Aye.
Okay, there we go. I make a motion.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, you weren't, I thought you were done.
Were there ever any issues with either, you know, transactions, financing of homes that this came up or anything like that?
No, no, mortgage companies.
They don't care how high.
Don't look at that, they do setbacks and things like that, but there's never an issue with regard to, with regard to mortgage or bank or anything like that.
No, we did run into it a few times over the past few years where the way the articles were written, that it was very difficult for a developer to bring a building forward.
To the building commissioner?
Yeah.
Yes, because then you need to have an engineer who says, yes, this meets the zoning requirements.
This just cleans that up.
You know, and to get the, you know, occupancy and things like that, banks don't look at the height, you know, requirements, you know, you don't get a zoning opinion, you just, you know, have a plot plan, this is where the house is, this is how far it is off, it looks like everything meets the zoning.
Okay. Tracy, I thought I had.
So I just want to clarify, though, so you do want a separate handout, so maybe the motion, we just have that printed out with this amendment, have that as a separate piece of paper, we'll have the PowerPoint.
Yep.
In a slide form, double-sided, and then we'll have the, the planning board report.
Right.
And then I'll need to, I'll need to speak with whoever's going to do the planning board report as to whether that individual wants to make the motion or whether you want me to make the motion.
It'll be Kevin, right?
Anybody.
Maybe, I mean, if Kevin's there, he tends to do it, but, but anybody can make that motion.
Yeah, Barney, it probably makes sense for you to make it, just because you're so intimate with it, I think.
Well, the reason I was thinking it might be easier for whoever's making the planning board report is that that individual can do it at the end of that report, but it's, it makes no difference to me, you know, whatever, whether Kevin's making the report, or Ron or somebody else, whatever you would prefer.
I think just have the chairman, Kevin, you know, Ron, coordinate with Barney, so we know someone's going to make the motion.
Right, it's a good point.
On the original handout, can there be a notation under that, for that bylaw to see addendum?
I can do that.
Easily, easily for people to attach it, so they don't look at it and then they're trying to figure where it goes.
Yeah, I can add like a see motion, you know, see, something like that.
And, and Frank has agreed to draft the motion, so we, we know that it'll be accepted by the moderator.
Depends on his mood. Always a little feisty.
But the wording is all set.
Perfect.
That's the most important part of it.
Yeah, thank you. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think you assigned those, don't I?
You do.